I go by the clock.
We had a wait for Mr. Romas here.
Yes, yes, indeed.
All right, now we can get started.
Mike's here, we can get started now.
All right. Jason, you can hear us?
I can hear you.
Excellent.
All right.
All right.
We are live on Facebook?
All right, terrific. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Tonight is Monday, February 21st, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. This is a Swamaco Village Board meeting. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And as a reminder, anyone choosing to speak, please come forward directly, speak directly into the microphone, provide your name and address. At this time, I would look for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by trustee Rodden to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Schneider. Is there any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Just as a note, we do have one member who is coming in via phone remotely, Jason Ward. Thank you.
Stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. All right, item number five this evening, presentations. Item 5A, Resolution 2200 through three, thanking Bob Showmaker of Trudell Holdings Incorporated for their donation to the Swamaco Fire Department. Chief Burtler?
All right, so we have Bob Showmaker here today with Trudell Holdings. Bob is a resident of Swamaco, and each year, his company kind of divvies out funds that they give to an organization, charitable organization, and we are one of the recipients of that this year, and he made a donation of $8,000 to the Swamaco Fire Department. So we'd like to thank Bob and his company greatly appreciated.
Thank you. So we have a resolution here, 2203, a resolution thanking Bob Showmaker of Trudell Holdings Incorporated for their donation to the Swamaco Fire Department, and it reads as follows. The Board of Trustees of the Village Board of Swamaco do resolve as follows. Whereas Bob Showmaker of Trudell Holdings Incorporated has donated $8,000 to the Swamaco Fire Department to fund personal protective equipment, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Swamaco Board of Trustees does sincerely thank Bob Showmaker of Trudell Holdings Incorporated for this donation of $8,000 to be used for personal protective equipment for the fire department adopted this 21st day of February 2022. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by trustee Rodden to approve this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a, I have a second, numerous seconds, but a second by trustee Eckert. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Congratulations.
We'll take a picture once we get done with the other ones. Does that work?
Thank you.
Does that work?
We'll do a picture.
We'll do a picture. We can get up twice.
All right, so we're going to go on to 5B. We actually have two resolutions. So, item 5B, Resolution 22004, thanking Covantage Credit Union for their donation to the Swamaco Fire Department. Chief Burtler?
So we have Jenny Kaefer and Jen Trudell here tonight with Covantage Credit Union. Covantage has always been a big supporter of the fire department. I know they donated monies towards the fire station as well. So, once again, I'd like to thank them for a $1,000 donation to the Swamaco Fire Department this year.
Excellent, thank you very much. This Resolution 22004, a resolution thanking Covantage Credit Union for the donation to the Swamaco Fire Department. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Swamaco do resolve as follows. Whereas Covantage Credit Union has donated $1,000 to the Swamaco Fire Department to fund personal protective equipment, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Swamaco Board of Trustees does sincerely thank Covantage Credit Union for the donation of $1,000 to be used for personal protective equipment for the fire department, adopted this day, the 21st of February 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from trustee Schneider to approve, and I have a second from trustee Rodden. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, Covantage. We'd like to take a second and have a professional photographer.
I think Jason snuck in.
Thank you, Bob.
This is pretty nice.
Thank you.
You don't have to talk. Get out of the way.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you both again.
Thank you. I think it's really impressive how, and how this community has gotten behind this fire station, and this exemplifies that. Tremendous. Okay, moving on. Item number six, public appearances. At this time, the public may address the village board on any item that's not currently on the agenda. We just ask that you come forward, provide your name and address, speak directly into the microphone, and we will not be taking action on it, but we may refer it back to staff for future action. Okay, I guess we don't have anyone who wishes to speak. All right, moving on to item number seven.
Before we move there, so I did, and I don't know who else got a phone call from this individual, somebody that lives on the north side of County B. I think they live down by the river, concerned that the new polling location was about to discredit people's vote and pull people from voting and all this other stuff. And I said, I assure you that the Village of Swamaco would not partake in that, and that we had to go to three voting locations. I don't know who else got a phone call from that individual, but we had a good conversation, and, and, you know, I said we'd look into it. As far as that voting location, I talked to Alex later on in the week, and obviously we had to go to three, and obviously the wards have to be split up evenly. And so I think our clerk and whoever else was involved in that process probably did the best you could to segregate and split. I know that Tom Lund also contacted me, you know, being that he's right there and has to go out to the reforestation camp. I also reassured the individual that, you know, the people out by the reforestation camp are probably pretty happy that they don't have to come this far. So, I think it is what it is type of situation, and you guys split up the wards as best as possible, correct? I mean, that's, so.
And I think, I think the call I got, I don't know if it was more that or more the fact that they were moving around a lot each election, if we got the same call. I don't know. But we, you know, Alex, you know, I talked to Alex, and we assured that person that because of the census too, that the polling locations should be fairly stable for the next 10 years and barring any pandemics or otherwise.
I spoke to three people about the new polling location, one of them being my spouse, actually, who went there, and they all thought it was, it was very uncrowded and it went very smoothly. But that doesn't address somebody who, like Tom Lund, lives next door and has to, you know, go to the reforestation camp. I used to have to go to Idlewild, and I live by the reforestation camp.
Right.
It's all relative, I guess, but, all right. Any other, any other comments from the board? No? Excellent. All right, let's move along. Consent agenda. Item A, Previous minutes of the village board dated 2/7/2022. We have a new hire, utility billing accounts payable clerk Melissa Arts. Item C, Treasurer's Report of January 2022. Item D, Check Register, January 2022. And item E, Municipal Court, January 2022 Report.
I just have a question. On the check register, how come there's so many overpays for the property tax? What, what does that mean?
Jessica can handle that.
We actually talked about this on Friday in the office. The reason that there's so many overpays is because the taxes likely went down for a number of customers, so when we receive escrow checks, the escrow companies send us a check equal to what last year's property tax bill was. So I don't expect necessarily that that will be the same case next year, for example.
I just saw an awful lot of them on the check register. That makes sense. Thank you. Motion to approve, if everybody's good.
I have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda from trustee Eckert. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Andrews. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right. Item number eight, planning and zoning and discussion action, request by Midwest Expansion, 2300 Lineville Road, Suite 200, for approval of a planned development district site plan revision to allow for a drive-through restaurant in the urban edge development, east of the Festival Foods parking lot located on the north side of Lineville Road, one quarter mile east of Velp Avenue, parcel SU 2757 zoned business with PDD. Zoning administrator, Dunks?
Thank you. We are looking at about a seven and three-quarter acre parcel here. The total urban edge development is over 43 acres. Pretty much everything there is the business with PDD overlay. The proposed site would be located on the east side of what was the main thoroughfare from the Shopko Roundabout. There's a four-way stop in there right now, coming off of Velp Past Festival or coming up from that roundabout out in front of Festival. Staff, which included the police and fire, did work with Midwest to develop an acceptable site plan. There was some discussion at Planning Commission about directing the drive-through traffic through the parking stalls of this restaurant and the possible backup for inside users of the restaurant. But that is typical for most fast food restaurants. They do, you know, we do like to contain them within their site, not that we have a lot of fast food restaurants around here, but you're going to back up somewhere. The original plan actually had an opening on the north side of the, the initial entrance in the drive-through, which staff felt was going to actually back into the, the main lanes, and that's what your police and fire were trying to avoid. So directing them through the development was, was better than the cluster that you'd have, you know, with vehicles coming three different ways, once you start backing up, it could really get to be a mess. So it was, it was approved by Planning Commission as it is in front of you, with the only condition was meeting all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
It's nice to see a new business coming in. I mean, I have concerns about the traffic, but it's, it's nice to see things filling in.
So sitting on planning and zoning, some of the things that were shared, we've got some really good folks on planning and zoning. You know, it was brought up the example of Starbucks, brought up and what, how difficult that is and what a mess that seems to be, you know, with the traffic backup. There was a lot of ideas that were, were talked about with regard to the site plan and redirecting that traffic. Ultimately, it came down to, unless it was directed this way, there was concern that traffic would back up into that, into, into the lane. I guess it's to the north, right?
Yes.
So there was some concern. The idea was that, when, the thought was, when you look at the footprint for other fast food restaurants, this is pretty common to see traffic directed in and around the restaurant. That way, it really only affects the restaurant. If they have a problem with it, then it's, it's really their issue. It doesn't become a traffic hazard issue. That being said, the other thing that we talked about in planning and zoning, and many of you were on the board, I think most of you, actually, were on the board when this took place. We talked to Midwest Expansion about adding some elements to that parking lot to slow traffic down when they added the apartments. You guys remember that? That might be a circumstance that we might have to address here, but we won't know until we, we get there. Ultimately, I guess, the decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission, at least from my part of it on the Planning and Zoning Commission, this design is a design that was done, I'm assuming, in concert with the restaurant, whoever that may be. I think they probably have more experience than I do in terms of footprints for their restaurant, so I, I wasn't willing to second guess it. I thought it was, give the restaurant a try, and if there's issues, they're going to have to address it. If it's a safety issue, then we'll address it as we did with the apartments.
I think furthermore, Starbucks, you know what, that's an internal issue. Midwest Expansion owns that parking lot, and if traffic backs up in that parking lot, that's their responsibility, not ours. The same thing here. I mean, this is far enough into that parking lot that if you're going to have backups, it's going to back up into the parking lot, maybe back in by, by the credit union there just south. So I don't think you're going to have issues that affect the village per se. It's, I, I, I'm happy that, that we're going to grow out in that area and continue to grow inside of that Tiff District. This is another element of that, whatever that fast food restaurant may or may not be. And I'm, and I'm sure this isn't the final draft. You know, this is conceptual correct into getting a conception approved. I mean, there may be some adjustments and changes to traffic flow or...
It's possible that the, the restaurant, once they sign on the dotted line, is going to be looking for a few modifications to this plan.
Right. So, I'm sure we're going to have to give a final approval eventually.
Just one more note, there's another piece of this that was discussed on planning and zoning. So when we look at that giant parking lot that we have out there, that was built for a big box, which was Shopko, and then built for some small to medium box stores, right? Well, we all know how big box businesses have gone, and the same with small and medium boxes, and we look at the occupancy, you know, in Midwest, that Midwest has, and that some of the changeover and some of the open facilities. It makes sense that they find new and creative ways to use that parking lot space and generate revenue for themselves, and this seems like a good one.
Absolutely, and I don't think it's going to affect, I mean, obviously, the Shopko building is all storage, except for the CP center going in the front, but I don't think that's going to require a ton of parking. So I think this whole thing kind of fits in that area. Hopefully, another fitness center or something goes in that other building over there.
Yeah, based on the location where it is, I, I think the traffic flow should be okay there.
There, is anybody there had a discussion? I'll make a motion to approve a planned development district site plan revision to allow for a drive-through restaurant on parcel SU 2757 within the urban edge development with the following conditions, that it, that it meets the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Excellent. We have a motion on the floor by trustee Rodden to approve the planned development district SU, parcel SU 2757 within the urban edge development with the condition, meet all requirements of other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
We have a second by trustee Schneider. Is there any further discussion or comment from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Okay. Administrative items. Let's move on to 9A, ARPA Investment of Funds Director Lee Joyce.
Thank you. So the village board requested information on investment of ARPA funds. The Village of Swamaco received approximately $683,000 in ARPA funds in June of 2021. The second payment in an equivalent amount will be received this June. ARPA funds are currently invested in a segregated business money market account at Fortify Bank, earning 0.35%. The local government investment pool interest rate by comparison is 0.07%. The investment of funds is regulated by state statutes and the Village of Swamaco operating policies. Those guidelines are highlighted in the memo. Our primary objectives and priority order are safety, liquidity, and yield. In investing the ARPA funds, recommendations in quotes were obtained from the American Deposit Management Company and Fortify Bank. Both companies recommended a money market account, given that the rates were similar to or better than CD rates at the time, and that the village could choose to utilize or obligate the funds at any point in time, time up until December 31st, 2024. We do have a few options going forward. The village could choose to review current market rates for money market and CD accounts. We could contact Ellers Public Finance for a proposal on managing all village investments, currently $20 to $25 million. Contact at least two of our approved depositories for new recommendations in quotes on investments, given the restrictions noted above.
Jessica, if we put it in one of these, are, are we locked into that, or can we continually move it to wherever we get a better rate or?
We are free to move the funds as we wish. We would have restrictions if you put it in a CD, and that there's usually penalties, obviously, if you withdraw.
Early, yeah.
Yes, but no, we're not in a contract of any sort where we need to keep the funds with Fortify Bank.
Money market seems like the best way, because you do have access if you choose to use it. And, and like you said, if really better deals come along, which I don't think they will, you still have the freedom to do so.
Without penalty.
Well, and this isn't long term. When would our first payment be for the Lineville?
We're already paying.
We're already paying?
We're paying a smaller amount, but I mean, each year we're going to be paying more and more for the next four or five years.
So with that being the case, I mean, this is more short-term than long-term monies, and we need flexibility to be able to pull when we need to pull. So, I, I think a money market account that you can pull out of is, is appropriate. I mean, I don't think anything out there, we're not going to make a huge amount of money on it.
Not these days.
So, keeping it flexible, I think, is, is the best. So, we, you currently have it in the money market, correct?
Yes.
Leave it. I don't think it hurts to review our, review a couple other places that we deal with, though, you know, and see what, if we can get a little bit better of a rate. As long as we can access it. Right. Without penalty. Right. Yeah.
Do you need an actual motion to, to test the waters with other of our banking finance, our institutions, or can you just go do that?
I don't, I don't think we need a formal motion.
Okay.
You can just check around. I mean, you know, I don't think you're going to get much better these days.
Well, and I think there was a pretty clear direction from the board where that money's going to be utilized.
Well, you know, and I, I still, I have a lot of reservations yet, and we do need to check into it, because, right, you know, even the overview that we were given, that's only an overview. And even in the overview, it states that there are more terms and conditions than what is stated in the overview. So we need to look into things more before we start spending or...
And I agree.
We need a little more time to do that.
We've got to cross our Ts, dot our Is, and make sure that we're not attached to some god-awful...
Yes.
...plan, but I think, once we get that clarification, I think you've already gotten that for the most part, Alex.
Yeah, I reached out to Congressman Gallagher's office, as well as our attorney, and right now, there is a little bit of disagreement on one of the terms, and before I bring it back to the board, I want to get some clarity and make sure everyone is in agreement on what certain terms mean. It's the consequence of having a 437-page rulebook, is that it might be interpreted in different ways. So, before we spend any money, we'll, we'll certainly make sure that we believe we're on the same, same track.
So from my, I, I agree with the flexibility, flexibility and security for these funds right now. Put them someplace where they're, that we have flexibility to get at them. Don't spend any of this, obviously, until we have these details presented. Because if there's, if we're looking at our legal and elected officials who are confused by this, that tells me that we, it tells me I shouldn't be surprised, but it also tells me that we need to do some additional work before we start to assign this money anywhere. So, I, I, and I also agree, you know, if, if you want to check out just informally a couple of other, you know, options, see what's available out there, I think that's also a good idea. There's a lot of ARPA money out there, so there's a lot of folks looking to set that aside. I'm not sure, like you said, we're going to find a better deal, but it doesn't hurt to look. Okay. So no motion necessary? Perfect.
Thank you for the update on that.
All right. Item 9B, parcel SU 542-1, Mink Ridge Road Property Update, Administrator Kager.
All right, so this is SU 542-1. We've been talking about this for about six months, trying to understand if there's any value in the village actually selling off this parcel. We had an evaluation done from JH Appraisals. This 23-acre rectangle came back at about $210,000 was the amount that the appraiser came back at. That's including or taking into account the wetlands located on the site. So, the village board's next action or decision to make is, do you want to just put a for-sale sign in the ground? Do you want to go out with an RFP and ask for specific proposals that you would sign a development agreement with, kind of similar to the fire station sale that we had? Or is the $210,000 maybe not worth it, and you'd rather leave it as green space? That's for discussion of the village board and looking for your direction.
And that money would all go to the sewer utility?
Sewer utility, correct.
I personally would like to see it go up for an RFP.
Me too.
And the reason being, you know, we look, look at the success that we had with this fire station and what that's created down there, and, you know, maybe this is another option for that. My guess is it's probably, you know, residential, obviously, but there could be, somebody might have a really neat idea about it. Let's see if that's out there. Yeah, I'm, I'm for that.
I'm okay with that.
Well, if that seems to be the general consensus, I will try to get at the next meeting a draft RFP for you guys to review and see if there's any details you want included or not included, and then we'll move forward.
Because there's absolutely no reason for the sewer district ever to hold on to that property. I know we dump our, some of our stuff there, but do we have other properties that we can do that?
We have other locations we can utilize.
Yard waste, right? Yard waste that we dump out there?
Uh, no, we usually just take any soil or ditch, ditch project.
Just want to make it clear what we're dumping out there.
Yes.
No, no, there's nothing contaminated, nothing like that at all.
Barrels of oil.
Not, not the appliances that stack up outside.
Yeah, when the bin gets too full, we just chuck it down there.
You did not say that. All right. Would you like a motion on this?
No.
No? All right, so we'll refer this back to staff. They'll come back with a suggested RFP. Thank you. All right, item C, Howard Swamaco School District linkage meeting, March 18th, 2022. Administrator Kager.
Thank you. So every year, the Howard Swamaco School District hosts a legislative linkage meeting. Typically, one or two village trustees attend that meeting along with myself. This year is going to be held on Friday, March 18th, starting at 7:30 to 9 o'clock, and they'll be holding it at Lineville Intermediate. And so I'm just looking for who on the board would be interested and able to attend that meeting.
I will be in Maui.
Well, that's going to be a heck of a commute if you're going to try to make that.
I'll attend that.
Good. I'll, I'll be there.
I'm in classes.
So, trustee Eckert, any interest? I, I would defer to you. If you wanted to go, just a minute. Well, I guess we could have three go, because we wouldn't be a quorum anyway.
No.
Okay. So I guess that's Mr. Trustee Andrews and I.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything planned. All right. 9D, Resolution 22005, disallowing Peter Pikarski absentee ballot claim. Clerk Bartletti.
Thank you. The village received the attached notice of claim on November 1st from the law firm representing Peter Pikarski, informing us that they are prepared to take legal action challenging the central count ballot process. This notice of claim was sent to all Wisconsin municipalities utilizing the central count procedure. The attached claim has been forwarded to our insurance company, and a claim has been established. In central count, we process absentee ballots as required by statute and WEC guidance. Once the election canvass is complete, the certificate envelopes and the ballots are given to the Brown County clerk and held until such time that they can be destroyed. The attached resolution was prepared by our village attorney to be approved and sent as the response to Mr. Pikarski's notice of claim. We were informed by our insurance company that this same response is being utilized by all Wisconsin municipalities that were served. The part of the statute that they are disputing, or that Mr. Pikarski is, is dissatisfied with, is the process where we mark the ballots in absentee ballot with the poll number, as each elector who casts the absentee ballot is placed on the back of the ballot. So it's an identifier. And with an identifier, if you were to do an opens records request, you could identify that person based on the information that's identifying that ballot. based on the information that's identifying that ballot. The county clerk will not approve a request from anyone looking for this information, information, understanding that it could be an identifier, and that somebody could identify how a person is voting, and that it's not anonymous. So that is the reason why he did present this to us. It really isn't anything that we can do as far as the statutes are concerned. We do the process as the statutes declare. So in this past election, that's how we processed. What we're looking for today is a dissolution of the claim. What happened, what needs to happen is it needs to be changed at the state statute level. There really isn't anything that we can do at a local level.
I, I tell you what, so I, I was part of central count in the November 2020 election, I helped out that day. It was a long, long day, even for the village, and that process that we utilize is very cut, very clean. You're able to pull ballots and move ballots. No one's looking at ballots, it's, it's a very simplified process. Now, one question I do have, when someone comes in and gets a ballot from the folks here, don't they mark that ballot, or isn't that ballot marked in some form? I mean, I know they hand you a ballot, but I don't know if a number or anything is correlated to that, to that ballot?
The only thing on the ballot at that point would be my initials.
Okay.
And my initials then are the, part of the processing that I issued the ballot.
So if you come in here, into village hall to vote, there's no markings on the ballot at all? It goes into the machine, and you don't know whose ballot?
Correct, only my initials, and then whatever they mark on the ballot.
So it's only central count that, that creates this potential conflict?
When they come in early, it's considered as an absentee ballot, because it's in an envelope, it's placed in an envelope, and it's processed in the central count.
Right.
So it would end up with that identifier on the back of the ballot.
Correct.
So, so, I mean, this is, this is a big issue and not a big issue. So it, it's not a big issue, because it's, we're following state statute. So if we would decide to, to endorse this from Mr. Pekarski, we would basically not be following state statute as the village of Swamaco. And we can't do that. I, I don't feel we can do that. If, 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 I would be surprised, but I don't think anybody on this board feels like we cannot follow state statute. This is something that needs to be resolved at the state level. It is, I think every one of us should be hugely concerned over this. I mean, the fact that a ballot number on an absentee ballot, by state statute, is supposed to be anonymous, and it can go down and be traced back by somebody who maybe has, you know, other...
Nefarious.
Thank you, has nefarious cause behind it? I mean, people, then, of course, a clerk isn't going to say, oh, you want to, you know, you want to know who voted for who? I'm not going to give you that, but what happens to the person who isn't that straightforward? Right? I mean, this is, this is a serious issue, and I think, as a serious issue, I mean, this is something that I'm going to be speaking to our state legislators about and sending some letters on for sure. And I think we should all be concerned about it, but again, like so many issues, is this something that the village of Swamaco should decide? I, I, I don't think it belongs here, I think we need to follow the state statute. Other comments? I mean, I would love to hear what other people think.
I agree, we need to follow state statute.
Right. We follow state statute, do I believe it's a big issue? No, because I don't, I think it would be a court battle. If somebody came to, to the Brown County and wanted this information, the county clerk isn't going to provide it to anyone, and it would be a court battle to be able, for that individual to actually get the information. So the identifier is there to keep things straight, and I don't think there's another way around it. I mean, and I'm looking at you, Michelle, because you, you have done election after election. There's not a real good way to get around it, any other way?
It's true, if you were to have to pull that specific ballot, if the identifier wasn't there, you'd just randomly pull one.
Right, if anything, you could just redact the number anyway, couldn't you?
You could, in, in the opens records request, you could.
I mean, that's common for protecting of identity, so if you redacted a number, then they really can't find anything.
Absolutely, you could.
There you go. Solid, right there.
So I'll make a, I'll make a motion, unless you have more to say?
Oh, gosh, no, no, said too much already, please go ahead.
I'll make a, a motion for Resolution Number 22005, a resolution disallowing the claims submitted by Peter Pekarski, as stated.
So a motion by trustee Rodden to approve Resolution 22005, directing village clerk to inform the attorneys for the claimant by certified mail of the disallowance of the claim submitted by Peter Pekarski. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Let... I have a second from trustee Ward. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero, thank you. All right. Item number 10, Fire Department Items, Item A, Fire Department Annual Report, Chief Bertler.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank full-time firefighter Samantha Jepson and paid-on-call firefighter Tracy Bezzel for their help on this project as well, so. Just a few stats, I'll go over real quick. So we had 248 fire calls, that being either structured fires, car accidents, government XI alarms, and additional 163 EMS calls, for a total of 411 calls for service. All of those, one-fifth, or 43 of those calls, fire, fire calls strictly, were for calls that were outside of Swamaco. So in total, an eighth of every call we go on is for a call that is outside of Swamaco. Changing topics, with that, we are currently standing at 43 firefighters, which is about two over our, not allotment, but typically, we run around 41, it's kind of that little fum or magic number. And I think that's, I would like to thank the village board, the commitment the village has shown to the fire department, and has made to the fire department, has paid dividends. We have the most volunteers or paid-on-calls in Brown County and probably in the area. We've had other departments ask how we do it, and I said, it's the support that we get from our community and the village board of why we're so successful. So I would like to pass that, thank you along to you guys. Like I said, it, it pays dividends. We, neighbors to our southwest and north are, would, it's, it's an oddity that we have as many volunteers and paid-on-calls as we do. So, thank you. If you have any questions, otherwise, I just wanted to provide you with your report. You have a question?
I always do.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, the, the EMS certification.
Yep.
Let's, um, let's see. Okay, this change has more than doubled the call volume?
What page?
Page two.
Page two?
This change has more than doubled the call volume of the fire department and reduced the overall EMS response time, which is great. But, so basically, every EMS call you also go on?
I do not go on every EMS call, our, the, the day staff that we have, eight to four.
Is that doubling up, or is that necessary?
It provides additional service to the community, because what you're paying for in the ambulance contract is to have ambulance coverage. You may not always have an ambulance in Swamaco itself. So with our staff being there, present, it provides additional service a lot of times, not all times, but I would say, I think about a third of the time, we're actually there before county rescue arrives. So it's providing better patient care to, you know, to the village. So it, whereas our staff is there during the day, working on either training, reports, that type of stuff, so it's, I'll say, it gives another job to do, but it provides another service for the community.
Okay.
A great, a great example of that, real quick for you. So my neighbor, I got over to my neighbor's house, he had fallen, and, um, I, I won't go into all the details, but he couldn't get up, and he was a mess. And by the time EMS got there, the two of those guys could not help get him off the ground, or to get him onto a flat back and be able to get him into a cart. And it took three or four firemen, plus the EMS, to get him situated onto a cart.
Okay.
So it was great that they were there. In fact, one of the firefighters helped me clean up the floor and clean up the area afterwards even. So it was, I, I understand that service and how valuable it is to have additional staff there, because sometimes you're at a scene and, and two EMS people is not enough.
Correct, and that, to Dan's point, usually, two EMS people isn't, isn't enough. You'll see, I'll say, like in Green Bay, you'll see an ambulance and an engine kind of following it behind. Most of the time, they're going to an EMS call, it's because the additional personnel are needed for the patient.
Green Bay, it's policy.
Correct.
And Schwamen on the pier, I believe that's both policy, that an engine has to follow on all EMS calls.
Is it, is it policy here, or is it typical?
It's not policy, we, we like to provide that service, we're, we're there staff during the day, so that's why we provide that service.
Okay.
And as far as funding for that, I've been working with Ben. I've been bugging Ben a lot.
Careful with that.
The grant writer.
Careful with that.
Alex says I have to leave him alone, but we're working on some additional funding for the fire department for EMS, strictly itself, so.
Does it, does it kind of push you off budget, or...
Like I said, we're exploring a lot of grant opportunities with EMS budget, so, or with EMS staffing, so. I, I would say, the, the only additional cost, because we do get our supplies from county rescue if we use anything, would be the fuel charges. But we are usually out and about doing inspections, doing public ed stuff like that, so. There's a little increase, but we're looking to recoup that cost from, um, some grants.
I think your report is very thorough.
It's nice report, very nice.
And we'll, we'll add on this every year, obviously, this is the first, first run at it, so.
But that picture, though.
Is this?
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
Or is this already on our website?
We'll post it on the website.
We'll post it on the website, yeah.
Just wanted you guys to see it first.
It's very good.
Thank you.
It was a nice review for the year.
Very nice.
Grow a mustache or something, so you look older than 12. Trust me, I'm older than him and Andy, so. We have the discussion, way older, actually.
All right, moving on, let's go to item 11, Recreation Department Items, Item 11A, Appointment of Recreation Director Administrator Kager.
All right, so with our open recreation director position, we had advertised that for about a month, and we did get 20 applicants. We interviewed five, and honestly, we probably had four individuals that, any four of them, if we were to approve them, would be able to do the job and do it well, but Nicholas Lemke really stood atop the rest. He's got 15-plus years of recreation experience, coming most recently from the city of West Bend, Wisconsin. Also served about nine years with the city of Madison, South Dakota. Really excited for him to get here, he should be starting on next Monday, so February 28th, and we just need the formal motion due to our ordinances or code to appoint Nicholas Lemke to the position of Recreation Director effective February 28th, 2022. Any questions or concerns?
I think we have a, I think we found a great hire, and I'm, I'm excited to see where, where he can take us to another level.
Right before spring.
You're in the parks, ready to make the motion?
I will.
There you go.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Nicholas Lemke to the position of Recreation Director, effective February 28th, 2022.
Motion from trustee Andrews to appoint Nicholas Lemke to the position of Recreation Director, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Schneider. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero?
Thank you.
All right, discussion on future agendas, anyone?
Need.
Strangely silent, all right, all right.
Then I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor from trustee Schneider to adjourn this evening's meeting, and we have a second from trustee Rodden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries six zero? Thank you, everyone, have a good...